We'll call this Meeting of the Ways and Means Committee together today, Tuesday, February the 3rd, 2015. Deanna, would you please call the board?
Do it.
Here.
Here.
Here. Excuse us.
Eric?
Here.
What?
Eric.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. We've all had an opportunity to review the minutes of January the 6th, 2015.
Almost minutes.
It's moved in support. Any questions or discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. At this time, we'll allow for public input. Anybody that'd like to address the Ways and Means Committee, please step to the podium, state your name and the issue that you'd like to speak on behalf of. You have an opportunity to address Ways and Means.
Good afternoon. Deanna East with MSU Extension. I just wanted to take a minute to introduce our new staff person, Katie Henson. She started with us on January 5th, and she is the Michigan Sea Grant Educator for the Great Lakes Bay Region. I'll have Katie just talk a little bit about herself, her background, and her roles and responsibilities. Hi, everyone. So, yeah, my name's Katie Henson. I'm going to be the Sea Grant Extension Educator covering the Saginaw Bay Region. I'm not sure how familiar you are with Sea Grant, but it's essentially a partnership between Michigan State University and University of Michigan that focuses on research, education, and outreach to preserve coastal and Great Lakes resources. The mission covers really a wide range of things, from development of coastal tourism, water quality issues, habitat restoration, environmental education. It all just depends on what are sort of the local needs and capacity of communities in the region. So, I'll be covering the coastal counties around Saginaw Bay and up into the thumb, so basically you should look at the heart of that. And I am housed here in basically the lower level in the MSU Extension offices. My background is principally in stakeholder outreach and public engagement on natural resource issues. I have a bachelor's degree from McGill University in Montreal and a master's in science from the University of Michigan. Most recently, I was working with the Great Lakes Environmental Research Laboratory, which is part of the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration in Ann Arbor, doing habitat and research planning. And then also spent a couple of years working on water quality issues related to sustainable power range in the Anacoma watershed. So, I guess I would say hello, everyone. Thank you for hosting me in the county building. I'm pretty new to the region. Just moved here at the beginning of the month, so I'm definitely looking to get to know the area and getting to know the different stakeholders related to natural resource topics. So, if anyone wants to chat with me, I can leave a stack of business cards here, or you can come by and meet me in the lower level. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I think we have a couple of hands up. Commissioner Krieger?
Thank you. And this might be an unfair question, being that you're not from the area and you're what we would call a newbie, but I'm hoping that you'll be supportive on our conquest or our journey in trying to get more access to the bay with our recreation area. So, I'm sure you'll allow me to talk from the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Harry?
Yeah, just listening to your resume, I think we're very fortunate, as in they kind of have somebody with your background come here and I don't know how you ended up here, but I sometimes wonder how I ended up here than I did. But I think the county general can be very fortunate to have you onboard and with all the work there hearing from you again.
Anybody else? You said you worked for NOAA?
Uh, before coming to Sea Grant, yes.
Were you involved in any of the studies that they did out at the Saginaw Bay?
Not directly. More of the most of the work that I did was in the Muskegon Lake area on the other side of state. But I am going to be involved increasingly in some of the integrative assessments that they're doing around MUC. And the multi-stressors project is pretty much wrapped up, but kind of future research efforts will probably be the community counterpart on that.
You'll let us know as you get into the nation?
I'll let you know.
Great.
I guess the other thing is, it'll be nice. I'll teach you how to use the groomer on the state park. We can always use the extra help.
All right. Thank you very much. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. And I'll leave some cards here if anybody wants to get in touch with me.
Tom, did you want?
I just want a card.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Can we get cards?
All right. Actually, Katie and I had already talked over the phone, and we were planning on getting together with some of the other stakeholders, including any commissioner and the staff that's interested. But as Bob will recall, back when the waterfront task force was very active, Michigan State played a very, a very, very active role in waterfront strategy development. And Sea Grant is ideally suited for that because they bring not only Michigan State into the equation, but also the University of Michigan. And it's just one of several partnerships that, over the years, we've had. And the fact that we have her in the building and in the region is going to be significant, I think. I told a story the other day about how we were able to get the landscape architecture program at Michigan State. They had 40 students spend an entire semester on the waterfront of the Saginaw River and the Saginaw Bay. And out of that was some of the best work that I think I've seen in the last 30 years, including the work that they did on the Uptown property back when the EPA owned it. The students came up with what their design plan was, not knowing that there was going to be a proposal for an EPA research and training facility. And the work that the students did, as Bob will recall, was almost identical to what the EPA paid a New York design firm $5 million to do. So, there's a bunch of things that we will be able to do over her tenure, not only with her working, Katie actively being a facilitator. So, we're just glad you're here.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Seeing none, none. Would anybody else want to address the Ways and Means Committee? Please step to the podium. Seeing no one's coming forward under our next order of business under petitions and communications from the Personnel Director. We have a reclassification of a mechanic at mosquito control.
Some moved.
Moved and supported to receive. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. From the mosquito control director, this is the 2015 scrap tire project.
Some moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Also from mosquito control, we have the light trap data collector contracts.
Some moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And one last item, we have the control material bids.
Some moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Commissioner Krieger?
Yep. Just a question about the amount of employees that we're going to be looking at this year. I'm not sure if we had 17 last year that was out, checking sites, or were there more than that?
Yeah, I think last year we had a total of 28 in all the shifts, including the biology department and the one in data entry and in field, and field over day and in the nights.
Okay. And again, they're seasonal, there was no full-time?
Pardon me? Oh, no, those are probably 16-week positions, maybe 18 weeks, a couple of them.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything for Tom? All right. Thanks, Tom. Some motions have been made. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. From the Bay County Sheriff, we have the fiscal year 2015 equitable sharing agreement.
Some moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We also have the OHSP Traffic Enforcement Grant Project.
Some moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Krieger?
Thank you. The sheriff. Just a question for you. There's been a lot of talk about this new app that are on the phones that you can zero in in the areas where there may be law enforcement. I don't know if that directly affects the county as much as it would maybe the city or the state.
Our officers are on the move, guys, so they rarely sit for more than a few minutes.
Okay.
So, that's... Somebody says there's a car at Midland-Uwood. Maybe in five minutes, they're not there, and they're somewhere else. The generally don't sit one place.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for John? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. From the Assistant Corporation Council, this is a retirement ordinance amendment for the Department of Water and Sewer.
Some moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Harry?
Yeah, I just want to make it so people, some people that are watching are wondering why we're changing the ordinance, but maybe we're here for Corporation Council that this was part of negotiations that were ongoing before, and we're just kind of following up as to what was done, laid through this past year. Is that correct?
That's correct. And if you have any questions, Shawna Warren has been working on this Assistant Corporation Council pretty extensively in conjunction with the board, and she's also discussed the matter with the Department of Water and Sewer as well.
So, the question was about the labor group, and yes, the labor group has agreed to the right time to speak to that. I do have one revision. I would like, number one, to read the maximum allowable amount of governmental service time, and I'll make sure to submit a revised resolution for the full board.
Are you changing that to contend with?
To government... The intent was it to be governmental service time, which is reflected in item number two, but not in item number one. So, that's just a clarification point.
And we had done a memorandum of understanding with our bargaining group back in August of last year in relation to this. So, it was bargained and put in that, and part of the driving force is going to be hiring enough people for the bay or the water treatment plant, so we've all dropped off the terms of point out.
So, this is just a follow-up to the memorandum, MOU?
Yeah.
Okay.
MOU, also, we did a policy change with the supervisory group that we had also certified about all the hires of departments.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Now, this might be a moot point if it's already been agreed upon, correct? But number two, no hires will be ineligible to purchase any governmental service time. Was my understanding that if someone purchased any governmental service time, there was an actuary, they'll study down to determine what the cost would be, and they would be responsible. So, I guess...
A couple of comments on that first. It's not a moot point. This is a general provision in our ordinance. So, while labor has agreed to it, unless this board accepts the change, the change cannot be made. The ordinance is the governing document for all the entities and all the groups in this. And while collective bargaining agreements can change things, like in our ordinance, they can change the multiplier, vesting years, by agreeing to them. This is a general provision that governs all of the entities and all of the members of this system. So, this is a specific carve-out for these two groups. Also, as to your impact study, it will not increase... There will be no negative effect to the system. It's a cost-saving measure. There is no requirement to do an impact study on this. However, we have talked about doing it with the actuary, and I think if you want to speak to your most recent conversation with...
I had a conversation with Jim Anderson, and first off, this does not adversely affect any current employee with the Department of Water and Sewer. It does not adversely affect anybody there. It would just be new hires going forward. And in regard to doing a study, I'm talking to Jim, and he felt it would be, in order to do that study where it had meaningful data, we need to know what the mix of those employees are that we hired. So, how many years could they buy? What would the impact of that be? What would the cost of those years be to those employees? And until we have that, we would have to make a number of assumptions, so the study might not be quite as helpful as it would be once we know the mix of employees.
Well, if I can continue on, I was never a big fan of not impacting people today, but we don't care about people tomorrow. I was never a big fan of that. But secondly, if... You don't need a study if the employee who's going to purchase governmental time is going to be responsible to pay those costs determined by an actuary. So, I don't even know, even though you may have negotiated, this is the, and I seen it one Thursday when I opened up my packet, and I had a question on that. If, and why it was negotiated, I guess I wasn't there either, but if it's not going to have any additional cost on the unit, and the employee is responsible for, or for all costs, if they were to... I mean, people have been buying governmental time forever, so now we're seeing from this point forward, anybody new can't buy it? And there's no additional cost, no burden onto the unit? I don't understand that.
I guess I'm not sure there's not a burden on the unit, and I think the full...
Well, doesn't the actuary determine, that's why we're not going to do a study, that the actuary determines that if I buy, if I'm a new employee and I buy five years of governmental time, that it's not going to... I'm paying for that.
There are... So, do you want to explain how other government service by action works?
Other government service, they would be required to submit their W-2 wages from the years that they were looking to purchase the service time. And for each year, the calculation is done, they would pay back the 4% employee portion, and then they would also pay back the percentage of the employer contribution during that year, as well as the interest factor that was calculated by the actuary. And that is how the amount would be determined.
Well, I'm only asking the question because I had this question on Reddit. If a new employee were able to buy governmental time, the unit will not be negatively impacted because the actuarial study will be determined by the actuary as to what they have to contribute for any, whether it's a year, or two, or three years of time. Is that correct?
Yes. Right. That is, that's the, that's the actuary's best guess at what that will be. Yes, that's their best.
Commissioner Loz?
Well, that just raises another question, then, because in the Doctors and Patients in the Bay County Water and Sewer, it says the number of employees in the plants that purchased time was one individual purchasing over 20 years in 2008. Analysis of these purchases shows that the employee's return is very favorable on these transactions, with the retirement system picking up most of the cost. But Commissioner Kuhn was saying that the employee is responsible for covering all the costs, so why would the unit be responsible to cover these costs? So, I'm a little confused about what we just talked about and what's in writing. So, pretty simple interpretation.
Okay. My understanding is there's a formula that's used when people purchase time, that formula is in place, that's based off an actuarial study that determines the interest payments and the wages and such. That can have a different effect on different employees. So, depending on the years that are bought, the purchase amount of those years and the factor applied to it, I believe it can have a negative impact on the funding unit. I think important, too, here is, obviously, we want employees to have a good retirement and a good living during retirement, enjoy retirement. And the folks who are talking about hiring here at the plants will have that covered by pension plans at previous employers for the most part, I think probably 99% of the time at another city, another municipality. So, they will have that pension available from that employer, and then this would be in addition to that, whatever time they may work for us. So, when we put those together, they have a full pension. Saying the vast majority of cases, there should not be a need or actually desired by additional time. So, I need to clarify some more.
Mike, are you also?
Well, and I guess in the follow-up with that, if we're hiring from an additional municipality, someone may not be vested. I think at the county here, we need to have 10 years service if you're vested. So, we may be picking up an employee at DWS that has nine years at a local unit, and there's 10 years vesting time. Well, they have no retirement coming from that because they're not vested by the time they're left. So, that was the opportunity for them to buy into the system and bring their nine years forward into the system. I don't think they could freeze in to get a retirement just because they're not vested. So, I don't think...
I think that it's important to note the difference between buying time and the Reciprocal Retirement Act. And the reciprocal retirement act simply allows you to use credit from other government agencies for vesting purposes. So, if you have someone who's coming in, it takes 10 years to vest at the county. Someone's coming in from another governmental unit that has nine years there, they can use those nine years toward the 10-year vesting requirement at the county, but it does not impact the amount that they're paid once they retire.
Only if the other municipality is a participant in the reciprocal retirement act.
Correct. So, they're...
Right. The other takes...
Yeah.
But...
So, they can still use that benefit under the reciprocal retirement act, assuming that the other plan participates. They still do have that benefit. We're not saying that we're not going to grant them that because we do participate within the reciprocal retirement act at the county.
But they can't buy the time?
They wouldn't be able to buy the time. They could use it for purposes of vesting.
Or...
Yes.
Commissioner Tiller?
So, the way I'm reading this, though, is that even though you negotiate the contract and sign the contract, assuming the parties have the agreement, this one and two doesn't affect anybody until we do something to change the ordinance of the county law.
Correct.
So, this is no voice. So, I think there probably should be some discussion with the administration and the public of commissioners here to see... First, since negotiating this is an open session here, let's sit down and talk about this. If there's details, we hammer out, we hammer out some details, and if we can't do that, we can do that. I'd suggest moving that correction. Or fruitful discussions, though.
I don't disagree with that. Personally, I don't have a problem limiting it to 10 years, but I never like to make somebody who wasn't hired limit them on things that everybody else has been able to do. So, if we want to refer this...
I'd like to make motion, refer administration, refer this question.
Yeah. Support. Okay. And then, Tom, you guys can get with us, and we can set up a meeting and kind of get a better understanding. Commissioner Loz?
I was just wondering if there was some type of timeframe or anything that they were working on.
Yeah, there is. But I think we've got some time to work with here if we need to step back and look at this so everybody understands that actually with the new plan coming online, it's possible that targeting bringing some employees on forward the first of May of this year potentially with the timeline. So, now, obviously, we would like this in place before we start hiring employees, so it could affect that as it goes along, but I think... Do you think that what we could do is we could look at it and resolve that?
Well, my point was that if we refer back to the administration and go to the next month, where do we need to come in with the board? But I don't move ahead, I don't think that we...
We probably could meet between now and next Tuesday, get a better understanding of what's going on.
I think we could do that.
So, Tom, you got it? If you want to schedule something, and a couple of us can be involved in that. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. We have, from the Chief Deputy Register of Deeds and Personal Assistant Relay for Life. It's a fund...
You don't answer. No, we need to go to the...
Didn't we vote on it?
No.
It would refer to administration?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. From the Chief Deputy Register of Deeds and Personal Assistant Relay for Life. Jill, are you going to talk on this?
I don't need to talk. We were just looking to have the authority to have some fundraisers. We did really well with our Vegas sale. We had raised over $1,635 for that. So, we're going to continue. We, instead of the breast cancer, we decided to go just with the African Cancer Society, so we're going to be doing different things.
We were just trying to give you an opportunity to promote your fundraising efforts, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Some moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. From the Director of Recreation and Facilities, this is a status report on the storage issue.
Moved to receive.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Project Manager Buildings and Grounds, Community Center, Project Updates. Did I miss one?
G.
Oh, excuse me. Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, Rick, I see you're on your way. The Fairway Moore...
The Moore.
Fairway Moore?
Some moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, you're up, Rick. Project Manager Buildings and Grounds, Community Center Projects?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got a list here of all the things that are happening right now. Photos of them passed around. The walking coolers are one, two large units are done. The reach-in is almost complete. The kitchen equipment has started to arrive. You can see all the ovens and warmers and dishwasher, and so, things are moving along well. The other thing that is happening is new lighting and things to all the existing senior center. The county staff has started moving everything out of that kitchen next week. Soon as the plumbers and electricians are in to terminate, we're taking all that equipment, moving what's going to stay into the existing kitchen, those three or four pieces, and the rest is going to go to the fairgrounds. There's another option with this, is there's a huge company in Vassar that is well-known, just a super auction company. We're thinking that might be the way to go, too. They had very good success with auction, and it's an option. So, they're hamming it three or four times, we pick it up Tuesday or Wednesday, it goes right to the auction company. Possibly. Then we're also taking the... Next week, Division 18 staff will vacate, and we'll be doing all the new preparation out of the team. We've got a few pieces of equipment that we're going to take out there for them, but if there's any more questions on that, we can't really be able to answer that, but that's where the staff is going to go. The other thing that happened, too, you'll see, is that raw opening in the door, the passageway into the senior center, now it has the new roll-up door in, so things are moving along well.
Anybody have any questions for Rick? Commissioner Krieger?
I did. So, Rick, once the old kitchen equipment is moved out, it isn't that the new stuff is ready to go, it's we're going to do the meals at the fairgrounds now?
Yes. Because there's a transfer of gas, gas lines, and we go there, power lines, and they're going to demo that kitchen out, and the kitchen will become a break room, a small storage room, and office for bar press. And so, there will be three weeks there that DOE staff will be at the kitchen preparing. We hope to have this, and it looks like it's going to be good, to have that open and begin cooking first of March, the new kitchen.
That's ahead of schedule.
A little bit.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Good job. Commissioner Loz?
Oh, yeah, the one picture, there's two pictures that kind of show stainless steel, and it's got a blast.
Yes, reaching coolers. Yeah, they'll have doors on them, so staff can see what, maybe the graph or whatever. I don't know what part I understand is that we, as we're preparing the meals...
As for the, where our delivery mail drivers will receive their cold items out of there so they can visually see when they're packed, and then they're ready to go out the door.
All right.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys. Anybody else have anything for Rick? Thank you, sir. It's been moved, moved and received, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Payables from Bayonet Housing Department from Center Ridge Arms.
Some moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. From the Finance Officer, we have some budget adjustments.
Some moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have the Executive Directive 2007-11. Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Did I miss one?
Okay.
I need my glasses, maybe. There. Sorry. I don't know, I don't have any glasses. Number two, I'm sorry, the analysis of the general fund unreserved undesignated fund balance, 2014.
Moved to receive.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And now the Executive Directive 2007-11.
Moved to receive. Support.
Moved and supported. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anybody have anything on the referrals? Any unfinished business? New business? No closed session? Miscellaneous? Commissioner Krieger.
I, I do have one miscellaneous, and I've kind of talked with Kristen, there was some pictures that were passed around or emailed out of a gym floor that they went to visit, and maybe you could touch base on it, because it's very encouraging on what we're going to be able to do at the community center without having to rip the old floor up. So, Kristen, if you want.
Yes, last Wednesday, John, Rick and I went down to Detroit, we visited St. Cecilia, and it's a very, has a very long history, of very famous basketball players playing there, Jalen Rose played there, Magic Johnson played there. And they just got, in 2011, they put in a brand-new floor. Forty years before that, the Pistons paid for the floor, and then in 2011, they put a brand-new floor in. And they did, they had a floor just like our current floor, and they put a floor over a floor, just like we're going to do, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, you could bounce a ball in all the spots and there was no dead spots, and we wanted to be, it, it was absolutely beautiful. And it's held up really well, and, and we learned a lot of information from the guy who runs the program and things of that nature, so it's very encouraging, and I am very excited to get the project done because the floor was beautiful.
Thank you. When are we going to do that, do you know?
Well, we're going to go for bid really soon, and then our timeframes are either going to be May or September, based on what the contractor, the one that's chosen, is available for. We can't do it when the students are out of school, so May or September.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Plus when anybody's playing basketball.
Yeah. Any announcements? Moved to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That's it.